It's seven o'clock and it's Tuesday. Uh, and we'll do a roll call starting at the left.
Uh, Homer, City Councilman.
Doctor Joseph Ford, City Councilmember.
Shelby Carceria, City Councilmember.
Oh, I'm Ronnie Price, Mayor of Andover.
Mike Warrington, City Councilman.
Troy Tabor, City Councilmember.
Tim Berry, City Councilmember.
Buck Buchanan, Police Chief.
Donna Davis, Chief Financial Officer.
Lance Onstock, Assistant City Administrator.
Chad Russell, Fire Chief.
Rick Lans, Director of Public Works and Utilities.
Andrew Kovar in for JT Klaus, City Attorney.
Krista Turner, uh, Assistant Andrew.
Les Spangus, Director of Community Development.
Susan Renner, City Clerk.
Jennifer McCoslin, City Administrator.
All right, let's bow our head for invocation. Heavenly Father, just thank you for bringing us here together tonight and thank you for uh, moving us on even slightly through the damages the city has taken uh, with the tornado and the people that are displaced and I just pray that uh, we all keep them on our hearts and in our minds uh, through this uh, period of rebuild and uh, we know it's gonna be a while, but I just pray that you'll keep us happy and healthy through these times and uh, I just pray that we all stay focused on the future and and uh, keep happiness in our hearts in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
All right, I pledge allegiance to this office.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, looks like we have a citizens request five one, street closure Deerfield at Water View. Steve Osen, come here, I said there. Okay, how are you all night?
Good.
Yeah, this is gonna be our twelfth year of doing this. Whole block participates in the event. But it's kind of shut down the street of the market, I think everybody has a copy of that maybe.
So Deerfield Circle, we have a block party every year and uh, anyway, we'd like to request that the the street be blocked for six P M. to
eleven fifty-nine.
Yeah, something like that.
Okay. Fire Chief, are you good with that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would just make the same request as always, just uh, leave stuff kind of to the side, so if we have to get a fire truck through, we can get through.
Absolutely.
Yep, we have, we've had no issues.
Okay.
We've been watching them closely, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, same, we've been by there through all these twelve years and it's been a good night.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the closure of North Deerfield Circle at the Water View Drive intersection on July third, twenty twenty-two for from six P M. to eleven fifty-nine P M. as requested.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six to zero. Public forum, oh, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can stay there while we're going on. All right, this time I opened up floor for pub, gosh, man, I'm having trouble, open the floor for public forum. If anyone has anything they'd like to share, keep it short and give us your name and address. All right. I do, I I have something I'd like to share, uh, public forum. Doctor Joe has been uh, became the honorary commander for Andover, Kansas for McConnell Air Force Base and uh, he's gonna try to uh, uh, bridge the gap and and uh, get us to working together, so I just want to say uh, congratulations, Joe, doctor, I'm sorry. All right. Last chance for public forum. All right. Uh, acceptance of agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, was there any modifications or anything, Jenny?
Um, there was one item added this afternoon, but it is on the agenda in front of you today that is a uh, city hall damage replacement of glass on your consent agenda. And we will be recessing tonight instead of adjourning um, due to your budget workshop on Saturday.
Thank you. I'm going to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Eight proclamations, eight one Andover High School Girl Swimming and Dive Team. And Tim Berry is gonna read the proclamation. And yes ladies.
Ladies, come on up. I'll read it. And they just handed this to me, so if I butcher your name, I do apologize. Whereas the Kansas five A Girl State Swimming and Diving Meet was held on May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two at Shawnee Mission Aquatic Center. And whereas the bug, the Andover High Girl Swimming and Diving Team prevailed over its opponents, thus winning the first ever Andover High Girl Swimming and Dive Team five A Championship. And whereas the Andover High Girl Swimming and Diving Team was led by Coach Bethany Bast- Bastian, sorry, and Senior Natalie Nugent, okay, who were the perfect leaders to shepherd in the the dawning of a new era of the girls swim and and swimming in Andover. And whereas the team's success is due in large to teamwork and devotion of the dedicated students, Natalie uh, Nugent, is it Mara? Mari Griffin, Cal- Calisty, Sophie, Kirsten, Sammy, Emma, Haley, Emma, Todd, Chloe, Marissa, Paige, Sarah, and uh, Quinn, Quinn, and therefore, Mr. Mayor Ronnie Price and with the City Council assembled in regular session on the fourteenth day of June, twenty twenty-two hereby proclaim June seventeenth, twenty twenty-two Andover High Girls Swimming and Diving Team Day. Congratulations, girls. Not gonna say anything about that.
Yes, congratulations.
All right. Court-appointed special advocate CASA proclamation as well and Councilman Troy Tabor is gonna read that.
Thank you, Ronnie, Ronnie, uh, allow me to do this, I'm on the CASA board for Tri- County CASA and it's a special organization that works with children uh, when they're put into the court system usually abruptly, um, and then a CASA volunteer stays with that child through their entire entire process and it could be from a couple of months to, we've had someone that was a twelve years, which is unacceptable, honestly, but that person stayed with them the whole time anyway and it's very much needed where uh, I would say we don't have enough volunteers, we're able to manage about forty uh, children and there's a need for about three hundred just in the tri-county area. And as far as the state's concerned, it's way understaffed and we do what we can, um, but I would highly recommend if anybody has the time, um, usually it's it's really, our our best advocates seem to be um, uh, nurses and uh, teachers that have retired, but anyone can be, um, but it's just they have a a special connection with children already and that's very helpful when you're you're you become their friend through this type of a situation, so I'm gonna go ahead and read the proclamation now and and again, Ronnie, thank you for allowing me to do this. City of Andover, Butler County, Kansas proclamation, whereas CASA volunteers or quarter court-appointed special advocates are trained and qualified to advocate for the best interests of children before court cases with allegations of abuse and neglect or or neglect. And whereas tri-county CASA was formed to assist children in the thirteenth judicial ju- judicial district consisting of Butler, Elk, and Greenwood Counties in South Central Kansas, whereas children enter the foster care system through no fault of their own due to allegations of abuse or neglect and rely on adults to advocate on their behalf. And whereas CASA volunteers appointed by a judge provide the court with the comprehensive and objective information the court needs to make the most well-informed decisions and help ensure the positive outcomes for children and youth and take time to build meaningful and authentic relationships with such children and youth. And whereas tri-county CASA remains committed to the recruitment and retention of volunteers who reflect the diversity of the children they serve. And whereas research shows that when a caring and consistent adult like a CASA volunteer is assigned to a case, outcomes are strengthened for children and families, a higher number of services are ordered and children are significantly less likely to re-enter the child welfare system, they perform better academically and behaviorally and have higher levels of hope. I therefore, I Troy Tabor, thank you Ronnie Price, designate June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two as tri-county CASA Volunteers' Day and recommend and celebrate CASA volunteers for the dedication and hard work in advocating for the best interest of children so that every child who has experienced abuse or neglect can be safe, have a permanent home, and have the opportunity to thrive.
Thank you Troy. All right. All right, nine consent agenda, nine one through nine five.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve consent agenda items nine point one through nine point five as presented.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Ten unsafe residential structure hearing, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two and Les is gonna discuss this with us.
Many, excuse me, many years ago, ordinance thirteen fifty-eight created an insurance proceeds fund. This fund is set up where the insurer of a property that's damaged by fire explosion or windstorm to the extent of seventy-five percent of the policy value or more must deposit with the city fifteen percent of those proceeds to ensure that the property is made clean, safe, and secure. That deposit of that fifteen percent starts a process where the building official, Chip Gerald, we'll talk to you here in a bit about each of these properties, but the building official goes out and does an inspection and notes those conditions that need to be corrected before that fifteen percent is released. Then a process is started where the building official notifies the city treasurer that he intends to start a process of condemnation of an unsafe structure if that property isn't made clean, safe, and secure. What's before you tonight is the next step where you would set a public hearing with the owners and all of those with an interest in the property to discuss the damage and how it needs to be made clean, safe, and secure. And at the end of that hearing, which in this case is all the way out at August ninth, you would make an order that these things need to be done and if they're not, the city would take the action and use that fifteen percent proceeds. So tonight is just the first step, it gives a lot of time for that property owner to respond and get things cleaned up, safe, and secure. So each of these cases requires a resolution that establishes that hearing date to invite the owners and all of those with an interest in the property to meet with the council and talk about how these things are abated.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I do, Les, so and Chip may go over this, I guess, but once this house is completely, let's say they decide to not rebuild and they get everything out, they tear down the basement and they fill it in, do they have to go through this process?
No, we've we've already had several who have cleaned it up, made it safe and secure, and we've returned that fifteen percent. I would anticipate the majority of these will never make it to that hearing.
Okay.
They'll be cleaned up before August ninth.
And this is for Jenny, I guess, or um, uh, JT's reply, I can't remember your name.
Andrew.
Andrew, that's right, Andrew. Is this a state statute, we have to have this law, or is this a, we can opt in and out of this?
My understanding is that state statute allows you to have this law, but then locally we've adopted um, that we will have this policy in Andover and that was many years ago, I believe it was a fire that caused this to to be adopted locally.
What other local cities have this, do you know?
I know Derby does, because we did look that up, um, Les, you may have other examples beyond that.
It's very common all over the state.
Okay.
And I guess one more thing I would say on that, I mean, talking to Chip right before the meeting tonight, he and I were talking about that the um, large insurance companies have not been surprised, they proactively send in the fifteen percent because they anticipate the policy, um, where we start to get maybe a little confusion is when they are smaller um, company, insurance companies with not as much national presence, so I I think it is even a more common thing even outside of Kansas.
So what is the recourse if the insurance company doesn't send the fifteen percent and these guys just vanish?
The, another piece of that same law and the and the code that the city uh, adopted in response to it is the city is granted automatically a lien on the proceeds. So the, as you would expect, of course, there are always practical uh, implications one way or the other, but if the insurance company were to pay entirely to the homeowner uh, instead of the fifteen percent, the city would have a lien and would have some creditors' rights with that in that respect.
And then I guess this may be for Donna, I don't, I know when I had an issue with my house and they paid to get my entire basement re- redone, they made these checks out to me, the wife, and to the mortgage holder, do they make it straight to City of Andover or do we have to get like eight different signatures?
We've had maybe four or five checks that have come in the name of us and the homeowner and the homeowners have understood and they've come in and endorsed the check over to us, we've not had a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? So, so um, there's not a situation where the city would keep that money for back taxes that are not paid?
The sole purpose of the fifteen percent is to clean up the lot and to return it to a safe structure, it is not for any other purposes.
Running that same question you asked, so I I feel like there is an ordinance of that though, that we have, where if you're in arrears for more than a year of um, paying your uh, property tax, then, and I don't recall what the response was for the city, but.
Yeah, it it's a little confusing because of the way they've put these two things all crammed into the same, um, the, when I said that the city has a lien on fifteen percent, the lien also applies to back taxes. So it's it's kind of a different concept that they've shoved all altogether, um, that you have a lien on insurance proceeds to the extent there are back taxes, it doesn't really have anything to do with the fifteen percent that's deposited with the city to help with cleanup costs.
So to be clear, they clear their property, they get the check.
If they clear it before the, yeah, before the city takes any action to absolutely, yes.
The, I'm not pulling these questions out of my backside, I've been asked, so I just want them to know that's the way it stands, okay? All right.
It also has been over social media with people asking or coming up with their, what they think it is, so hopefully this meeting and uh, I'm not sure if there's something else we can put out about it, um, telling them the process of what we do and don't do and, but it has been a little bit of negative negativity on some of the social media platforms.
So we'll get, go ahead, you have something?
I I was just gonna say, I know that we did create a handout, I do need to follow up and see how successful we've been in getting that handout out to the impacted individuals. Because it's complicated, we were really not looking at explaining it citywide, but we certainly could, I mean, we could put the flyer out there on social media or something like that, but I will make sure that we've at least gotten them to all of the impacted individuals.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one clarifying question? Because for some reason my brain's not wrapping my, around this one aspect, so let's say they're ten thousand behind more than a year and then this happened and they're required to put in the fifteen percent and they put in the fifteen percent and then they clean up everything, they do receive that fifteen percent back even though they might have been ten thousand in arrears from a year or more ago, is that correct?
If, I guess if we have a lien on the property for taxes already.
Yes. Yes. It, what you just said is correct, but you would then have the ability to go to the insurance company and or to the homeowner if they receive the proceeds and obtain the insurance proceeds to pay out the taxes, the taxes are completely separate from the fifteen percent.
Okay. Okay, yeah, because that'd be terrible if we said, oh, sorry, we're taking this extra ten grand and now you don't have enough to finish, you know, whatever, or pay the subcontracts as it.
And that wouldn't be in our best interest, but but at least we got it out in the open because I have answered a myriad of questions on this. Because of the help from media. So, uh, okay.
Mr. Mayor, do we have to do these individually or can we? Yes.
Different times.
Yes, we can do them individually.
Oh, yeah, they are. Didn't look at the times.
Thank you, sorry, Mike.
So, shall we?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move to adopt resolution fixing the time and place and providing notice of public hearing before the governing body, the City of Andover, Kansas, to consider condemnation and ordered repair or demolishing of a structure at fourteen oh one South Aldrich Drive that is a public nuisance, dangerous, or unsafe. Said public hearing shall be held August ninth, twenty twenty-two at seven thirty P M. at sixteen oh nine East Central Avenue, Andover, Kansas.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero, ten three.
Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, is it supposed to be seven or seven thirty?
Oh, I totally said seven thirty, can I make amend my motion to change the time from seven thirty P M. to seven P M. and whoever's segment.
I'll amend my second to reflect seven o'clock.
Okay. It said seven thirty in here, that's why.
Yeah, I got.
Y'all are good, man, I'm impressed.
We have to approve it.
Ten three.
Oh, we have to go ahead.
Oh, yeah, vote up, vote on it again since you amended it.
Yeah. So just all in favor.
All in favor.
I'm so confused right now.
So we just gotta vote again.
Just say all in favor.
Okay, okay. Okay. All right, uh, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero, now.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I could interrupt just really quick, I do want to make it clear to the public that your building official is here tonight, he is prepared to answer any questions about any, you all have in your packet and it's available on the website, information about each of these properties, but I do want to make it clear that there is backup information and there is somebody here if you have any questions about each individual property.
I'm glad you hadn't said that, Mr. Mayor, can I ask Chip a question?
Of course.
I'm gonna, since you got all dressed up, I'll ask you some questions. In order to do this, have you spoken to each one of these homeowners or is this people you can't get a hold of?
Some of them I've been able to speak to, some of them I have not.
Okay.
Uh, usually I'll speak to uh, representative of the insurance company, I'll try to reach out and make contact to the insurance company if possible.
So are these the only ones that you've reached out to, I know we have a lot more destroyed homes than this.
So we started with the first insurance check we received and we started that as number one on the list and as we received more insurance checked, we started the clock, the initial twenty-day inspection period, uh, which led us to tonight, uh, and presenting these homes to you.
Do you foresee any problems with them meeting this date?
I do not, no, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Mike.
While you're up there.
Yes, sir.
Um, obviously, like Tim also said, that there's many other structures that will probably be on this list and we'll have them just about every meeting for a while. Um, how do you go out and look at these, or you already have the list, you probably already know which one, which are which, and when will we see those if the insurance checks do not come to you in a certain time period?
Um, so I have a list of all those structures, if I don't get insurance checks, um, that means the insurance company didn't receive a seventy-five, declare a seventy-five or or higher percentage of value or of uh, loss to the structure. And so we won't be receiving those insurance checks, if it's under seventy-five percent, it's up to the homeowner to take care of that, the city has stepped back from that, if I'm correct in that.
Good question.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt a resolution fixing the time and place and providing notice of a public hearing before the governing body of the City of Andover, Kansas, to consider the condemnation and ordered repair or demolition of a structure at seventeen forty Lantern Lane Court that is a public nuisance, dangerous, or unsafe. Said public hearing shall be held August ninth, twenty twenty-two, seven P M. at sixteen oh nine East Central Avenue, Andover, Kansas.
Second, Troy.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero, ten four.
Mr. Mayor.
Two four oh nine Velvet Leaf Court.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt a resolution fixing the time and place and providing notice of a public hearing before the governing body of the City of Andover, Kansas, to consider the condemnation and ordered repair or demolition, nee- demolishing of a structure at twenty four oh nine Velvet Leaf Court that is a public nuisance, dangerous, or unsafe. Said public hearing shall be held August ninth, twenty twenty-two, seven P M. at sixteen oh nine East Central Avenue, Andover, Kansas.
Second.
Any further discussion?
You have one question that kind of pertains to all of them, Chip, do we have, I mean, do you have a timeline of when you want to get to every one of these demolished houses to get this process done? Do we have a policy in place for that?
We do have a policy in place, after the twenty days is up, uh, I start the process to go out and and uh, send these to to being to begin the process.
Okay, I I guess not these, but the other, you know, the.
Yes, the following, the remainder of the structures, yes.
Okay, so so you have twenty days to get to them and get us these resolutions?
Yes, and I I usually get to them uh, within a day or so
Okay.
of getting the check in.
Perfect.
Uh, I guess I would have a question too, do do we know if um, the fact that everything is taking so long, um, supply chain issues, that it's actually would take much longer than normal for them to fix their homes?
Well, so what we're.
Well, to get to this point, oh, wait, I'm sorry.
It's clear the property.
They have to clear the property, they have to make the property safe and secure. And so that means removing.
Yeah, I didn't take the house.
Yeah, take the house away, um, if they're planning on rebuilding it, they need to put a fence around the open hole, uh, make sure the power is turned off, uh, things like that.
Oh, okay, that makes more sense. Mr. Mayor, I have one additional question.
Go ahead, Mike.
Um, Jenny. The uh, let's say you reach out, the building inspector, and there's thirty more, are we gonna have them all on one agenda, are they all gonna be, are you gonna spread them out? Um, because you know, that could make things extremely long, even though it's important and that's that's fine, but I was just wondering if you had something that would, if y'all had something in mind like that.
Everybody gets their individual agenda item and the clock starts when that check comes in, so there's very little control actually over where we're gonna place them on an agenda, so if we get a deluge of checks tomorrow, then your next meeting's gonna have a long list. Now, what could happen in between there is if when Chip goes out and it's good to go and he can release it without ever bringing it to you, then you might have a meeting with few or none, but if if he goes out and several of them have still need work and are not been cleaned up to the satisfactory nature of the building official, they'll be on the next agenda.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero, ten five, twenty-four fourteen Velvet Leaf Court.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I moved to adopt a resolution fixing the time and place and providing notice of a public hearing before the governing body of the City of Andover, Kansas, to consider the condemnation and ordered repair or demol- demolishing of a structure at twenty-four fourteen Velvet Court, sorry, Velvet Leaf Court that is a public nuisance, dangerous, or unsafe. Said public hearing shall be held August ninth, twenty twenty-two at seven P M. at sixteen oh nine East Central Avenue, Andover, Kansas.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero, ten six, seven thirty-six South Hedgewood Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to adopt a resolution fixing the time and place and providing notice of a public hearing before the governing body of. before the governing body of, of the city of Annover, Kansas, to consider the condemnation and ordered repairing or demolitioning of a structure at 736 South Hedgewood Street that is a public nuisance, dangerous or unsafe. Said public hearing shall be held August 9th, 2022, 7:00 PM at 1609 East Central Avenue and over Kansas.
Second, Troy.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries six, zero. Ten, seven, 742 South Hedgewood Street.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I moved to adopt a resolution fixing the time and place and providing notice of a public hearing before the governing body of the city of Annover, Kansas, to consider the condemnation and ordered repair or demol, demolishing of a structure at 742 South Hedgewood Street that is a public nuisance, dangerous or unsafe. Said public hearing shall be held August 9th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. 1609 East Central Avenue and over Kansas.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six, zero. All right, 11, Phillips and Ellen Street Rehabilitation. Rick Landrith.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, this work is in the area generally, well, Philip Street work is going to be from central up to Ellen and then Ellen Street will be from Philip over to Broadview Lane. As many of you are probably aware, this is some of the areas where streets are in some of its worst condition. It would be no, it'd be an understatement to say that this is just an area where we get most of our complaints on the street network. It generates the vast majority of our complaints. A few years ago, that's three or four years ago, we did a payment condition index survey of our streets. COVID struck, it took a little time to get the presentation done to the council. But, um, you guys agreed to a five year plan. This is part of our five year plan. We're getting to it. Prior to bidding this, we, we chunked this area down into three projects because we were a little concerned about the cost structures. And some of the projects we're seeing some pretty high bids on right now and asphalt jobs. Well, one of the larger factors in asphalt jobs is oil, as you can imagine. So we were a little nervous are how the bids would come in. We are very pleased with the bid results. They were substantially under our revised estimate and not that much higher than what we thought it would be back in 20 when we planned this work. So that's good. The contractor that were recommended for this work and the lowest bidder is Pearson and they've done some of the similar work for us real recently and have done a good job of working with the residents. If anyone's done any kind of this work and where you're going into an existing street with existing houses and such on it and you do a full depth rehab, it's a little bit difficult because you gotta work with the residents and help maintain access so they can continue to live their life as we rebuild this. They've done a pretty good job of working on this. We have quite a bit more work planned for this year, but, uh, we were a little hesitant to go off a bid for that until we saw what this first number was going to be. So we will be bringing you several more large projects for street rehab work yet this year. If anyone has any question, I would be happy to try to answer that question for you.
Mr. Mayor? Rick, I do have a question in regards to we're going to do asphalt on this one. Is that what we're going to do then on all of them forward? Or are we going to still bid it out to the concrete and roller compacted concrete as well?
We are considering possibly requesting the contractor to change order and if they'll honor their, you know, prices on this, but we want to get the project under contract. Because it is such a volatile market. If we did that, we would, uh, capitalize on this fairly low bid in this market and be able to continue on the work a little faster because we have already kind of got the work kind of designed out because we were planning this to be one large project. If we did that, obviously we would stay in asphalt. Um, in, but our plan is in the future on most of these jobs to bid them as concrete alternates. You know, there's a point where concrete is a better product and, and, uh, a better return on your dollar. However, this is not one of those cases. The separation is just too much to justify that cost.
Thanks, Rick.
You're welcome.
It's safe to say that the, obviously the, uh, we called it blue top when I was doing road construction. Whatever's underneath there now is not acceptable for today's standards. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we'll be taking the road down 11 inches and putting back six inches compacted rock with 10 star on it. And, um, this will, this, this is what gives your road the strength. The asphalt is just for riding more, more or less. We're going with a five inch asphalt road. Um, this is a built out addition. We feel like that's fine on this one and it gives us something we can maintain. As I wrote in my memo, this is old Chip's Hill roads primarily. It has no structure underneath it as far as asphalt structure. So there's very little methods we have for maintaining other than just digging it down and packing a bunch of asphalt back in. So it's kind of turned into a quilt looking network of asphalt patches through there. It's, it was, this work was done in the eighties, I believe, on this particular stretch of the streets with a product that probably shouldn't have lasted 10 years, to be honest.
In regards to the concrete, it's not a high traffic neighborhood as, as some in town where it'd be beneficial to do concrete, is it? Or do you even go off that? I'm just curious.
Well, I mean, you look at a lot of things when you're trying to analyze whether you would recommend concrete over asphalt. And, you know, volume of traffic, type of traffic, the heaviness of the traffic. And those type of things and, you know, in a brand new neighborhood, where you're going to be building a whole bunch of new houses, you're going to have a lot more heavy traffic going in. This, this neighborhood is pretty much built out. So with the exception of a few maybe local in build projects and so forth, your heaviest load will be your trash trucks on a common basis. So this, I, I feel confident that this roadway is, will last for quite a while and be substantially improved over what they have now.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I move to accept the lowest qualified bid for, from Pearson Construction LLC, Wichita, Kansas, in the amount of $290,873 and reject all other bids and authorize the mayor to sign the contract for paving improvements to serve Philip Street and Ellen Lane.
Second.
I'd also like to state through the years that man, the, the street department has done amazing job with what they've had to work with over there as far as keep me from squirming like a mashed cat. So they've really, they've done what they can done, do and the neighborhood does appreciate it. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six, zero. It's good news. 12, Central Park Repairs, April 29th, 2022 Lodge Demol, Demolition.
So this has taken a little bit of time to get here. I guess I should explain a little bit why it's taken us as long to get to the point of demolition. The insurance, there's apparently some laws and insurance I didn't realize when it comes to total and utter structure. If there's standing walls, they have to do more investigation. And so we had to, is, go back and expose the interior sheet rock and insulation of the interior walls. The insurance agent came back out, adjuster came back out and then authorized us to, or basically totaled the structure out and then as said, you'll get bids and or get a proposal for doing demo and, and presented to him for his approval for what they'll cover. This dollar amount in front of you tonight is fully covered by the insurance. It doesn't affect what we get for rebuilding. That is a separate thing with our policy. It is strictly just an expense that's covered flat out. And then what they value the structure after rebuilding is what it is. It is not, I want to reiterate, it doesn't come from this dollar amount. Um, the first one I got was pretty high and I requested several more. I got a couple that were fairly close together and, and, um, I ran the low one through to the insurance company. And, uh, they approved the expenditure in full, so this will be fully refunded. Obviously less our one time deductible, it covers all of our structures. If anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer those.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So I do, Rick, when you say you, you have to, we have to go in and expose the walls. Does that mean like you just go in and expose a two by four? Or do we have to have a whole crew come in, tear down all the sheet rock and then they come in?
So we actually hired, and I think we might've had that on agenda packet. I should have checked that. Uh, a local semi-local contractor, Icon Structures, to do that work. Cause our staff is just, I'll be quite frank, doesn't have the time or, you know, right now. And they were so gracious to get into it really quickly because everyone's really busy, but they knew we needed this work done. They got in and exposed that and they had to tear out house. All the sheet rock and all the insulation had to be removed before the insurance agent could review the structure and deem it unsafe and or unbuild, rebuildable and better off to just start over.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? I move to accept the proposal from Bradburn Corporation, Wichita, Kansas, for the demolition of the lodge in Central Park and the not to exceed amount of $42,676.57.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six, zero. City Hall's second floor tenant finish slash renovation. Lance will speak to us on this.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, for your consideration tonight is an agreement with Crossland Construction Incorporated uh, to finish additional office space on the second floor of City Hall. As you guys remember, early in 2022, the city entered into an agreement with GLNV Architecture to develop concepts. As the city continues to grow, its staff continues to grow, additional spaces is needed. The concepts developed by GLNV during that phase or during that part of the process resulted in two phases for additional office space that you see, obviously included in your agenda packet and on the screens before you. Phase one, which you see in green, um, consists of two, the addition of two private office spaces and a shared workspace currently depicted as, uh, holding for, uh, individual workstations. In addition to the concepts, uh, they also provided estimates for the projects. Uh, you'll probably also remember that the estimate that we received from GLNV at that time was approximately $88,000 to construct that first phase, again, what you see in green, which exceeded the amount that was included in the 22, uh, 2022 adopted budget. In response, staff contacted, uh, Crossland Construction Incorporated to, uh, review the concept, uh, see if they could find any opportunities to control the costs of the concept or the actual construction. As a result of working with them on sites and having some subcontractors, their subcontractors in to review, um, they did ultimately provide the proposal or a proposal to act, to complete, to construct that first phase, which has resulted in the contract for your consideration this evening. Uh, the contract is in the not to exceed amount of $64,071, um, which is much closer to the amount that was included in that 2022 adopted budget. So if approved, um, the project would come in approximately $9,600 above what was included in the budget. Um, staff has taken a look at the administrative department operating budget and has identified funds or savings that can be used to fund that overage. Staff would, uh, recommend approval of that contract. And I can answer any questions about the contract or the project that you may have.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Lance, what we budgeted for 2022, was that to do the entire phase or just the phase one that's in green? I can't remember.
It was prime, it was just to finish what was in green. We just wanted to include future expansion, um, into that scope of that original work with GLNV to make sure we were not only looking at our needs for this year, but also into the future.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the contract with Crossland Construction Company Incorporated, Wichita, Kansas, and then not to exceed amount of $64,071 related to the City Hall's second floor tenant finish renovation project.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six, zero. Employee handbook, Chastity Page. Going to talk to us about this.
Hey, Chast. Hello, uh, Chastity Page, Director of Human Resources. Um, as we discussed in the May 23rd workshop, our existing position and salary classification schedule was last updated in 2019. In order to take in to account, um, inflation over the last few years, um, we did increase those ranges by 1.5% for each year since 2019. And then we smoothed our numbers so they fit a little bit more consistently with our, um, our schedule with a 12% spread between the midpoints for each level and then a 50% spread between the minimum and the maximum of each level. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
One.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the updates to the position and salary classification, classification schedule as presented to be effective January 1, 2023.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I guess kind of a statement more than a, a straight question on the one and a half percent. First of all, I think the way that this was done was perfect and a lot of really good research in it. But I guess I would caution any us or anyone chasing inflation to re redo salaries. Um, because that just causes inflation and we didn't do that here, I don't think. I feel like it was really well done, but that is something that I, um, we're starting to see happen quite a bit, um, which really distorts salaries and everything with the assumption that the cost of things like gas and food will come back down. Eventually, but it's a terrible time we're in for that kind of thing, but chasing inflation, I think, is something everyone should keep in mind not to do. Yep. Makes it worse. Yeah.
Very good point. There will be a correction.
Yeah.
All right, uh. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six, zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Executive session, 15, one attorney-client privilege.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to recess into the executive session for consultation with the city attorney pursuant to KSA 754319B2, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. The session is to include the governing body, city attorney and associate, assistant city administrator and the city administrator. The open meeting will resume at 8:12.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six, zero.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries six zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to recess into executive session for consultation with the city attorney pursuant
Man, we've come a long ways as a governing body. You know what? I like it. Member items.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just had two quick things. So in the Whampel meeting today, two items both dealing with the US fifty four project. One was there was a change to actually move up the date frame because KDOT wanted to do it quicker, which I don't, I don't, I didn't quite understand because it was still the same start date, like twenty to twenty five versus twenty to thirty or something, right? Twenty twenty, oh no, it was twenty twenty to twenty forty is what it is now. And originally it was twenty twenty five to twenty forty. So actually it does allow them to do it five years sooner. Doesn't guarantee it, but it's there. And the other thing that was pretty interesting was the overall dollar value that is the current estimate of what'll be spent for all aspects of that project is two hundred and seventy six million dollars.
That's phase one.
That was phase one and two?
That's phase one through, yeah, that's phase one.
Yep.
And the date change was phase one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Phase two of that project is twenty twenty eight. So that, that date didn't change. No. Okay.
Homer, you got something, bro?
I'm just excited for Father's Day on Sunday. So happy to all the fathers out there. I, I even got Les a little whopper plopper tonight because I'm gonna try that new fishing lure out and we'll see how it goes. I'll let you guys know. But excited to have my dad come down. And so I wish all the fathers out there, Happy Father's Day. And those that aren't with us anymore. So appreciate it. And I appreciate all of you guys. So thank you.
We have a couple, a couple of events coming up, a concert and Taco Fest and hopefully those
Taco Funs!
Those sales are going well, hopefully. And I'm excited for both.
Me too. Especially that Taco Fest thing. Margaritas and tacos. What could possibly go wrong? So it's exciting times, though.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to rese-
Oh, can I jump in there? I was trying to make sure everybody's done with member items. Can I say a couple of things real quick? Okay. I want to let you know that your budget, so this Saturday is our budget workshop, which you were doing a great job and you're about to recess to that because we will be leaving here and going into your budget workshop on Saturday. I wanted to let you know your packets for that will be out by end of day tomorrow on iCompass. So if you're looking for those, you'll get those tomorrow. And then the other thing I wanted to mention, we posted this on social media, but since I want the public to be aware, our friends at South Central Mental Health have offered Tuesdays from ten AM to six PM for anyone affected by the tornado to be able to either drop in for services at South Central Mental Health or call them. They're located at two twenty one East King, but there are certainly some signs and symptoms of PTSD that are out there that we shared today that many in our community may just now begin to be aware of or be seeing in their friends and loved ones. And so I wanted to publicly thank South Central Mental Health for taking care of our community. Now I'm done.
Not, and I guess it's worth saying, and the chiefs can speak this much better than I can, but there's also a survivor guilt that goes along with the neighbors that their house is still standing untouched. And, and it, it's real, right? Wouldn't you agree it's real? So those folks are welcome to, to get help. If they need to talk to somebody, the help's there for them. Don't, don't think it isn't because it's, it's real. And the firefighter police can tell you much better than I can. So we're gonna heal, we're gonna get through this. And we're gonna smile on the way through it. So let's have a good summer. All right.
Mayor, I can agree that that is real because it's, I've been affected with some of that. So, you know, yes, part of my home was destroyed, but you know, there was ones that were much, much worse, one or two homes away. So that's a real feeling.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move a recess to Saturday, June eighteenth. Did somebody else have something to say? Sorry?
No. I'm sorry, sir.
I move a recess to Saturday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-two at nine AM for the budget workshop at City Hall.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries six zero. Another year and a half, I might figure this mayor thing out.